Call this meeting in order of Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And we start it out with a pledge to our flag.
Follow me, and this is for the flag of the whole United States and the best in the world, and say I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. Are there any, anybody, any of the public here wishing to speak to the board?
Mr. President, sorry. Roll call first, please.
Okay. Roll call.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Director Michael Schaefer.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uden.
Here.
President James Fairman.
Okay. We'll go back and, uh... Are there any public here that would like to address the board? You're, you're, I've got your...
From agenda items, yes. No, 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 on agenda.
Okay. C1, August 20, 2019, code enforcement officer report. Ed, would you do this on...
I'd rather begin with four first. Good morning, Mr. Perryman and members of the board of directors. Ed Roberts, your district code enforcement officer, presenting the August 2019 code enforcement officer report. For the month of August, there were a total of seven scavenging investigations conducted throughout the city for the benefit of the board and the audience. In fact, I have placed maps for at a glance with a brief synopsis of each and every contact and the outcome. If I can direct the attention of the board to the map at the rear of the package, you'll notice the distribution of the scavenging contacts throughout the community fairly equal in the course of this month with the north end, the south end, and a little concentration primarily on the west side of town. The locations that were, the investigations were conducted at were at the 500 block of Hamilton Street, formerly residential multifamily area, Minor Street, Orange Avenue. There were quite a few in Pepper Tree and Loa Pong, or all that area. Loa Pong and Pepper Tree are but to each other. Yeah, they all pretty much have a roundhouse on an alleyway. That's a normal area of concern for us. There were really no items, no, no negative contacts or anything that resulted in unemployment awareness, no problem. And I'll just continue concentrating efforts in that area until the problems are settled. As board directors, any member have any questions?
I would like to say my question. Are there any reoccurring people that are, that you're...
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Especially on the Royal Palm border, sir.
Yes.
There's a couple of folks that have taken residence up in the area.
Okay.
Transit in nature. I don't know if they're homeowners or occupants of any multifamilies there. I think they just kind of exist in that...
That's been a synopsis, you know, for the last...
Yes, sir.
Probably, yeah.
Any other questions regarding the scavenging?
Anyone have a question?
Okay, quick, sir. And just the last item for me, trash container enforcement. We did have an uptick. We've been hovering in the 100 in the course of the month. This one, this month, brought us 221 incidents of carts being let out or close or contacted or we had to take action noticing and tracking property. So, 121, and this one spans the entire town. We break, I break it up. I run a patrol down there. I'll concentrate on one, one sector of the city, and that will follow the trash retrieval days normally. I just do it day and then after.
Yeah, I had a comment. I've had a lot of calls on the organic trash cans, and unfortunately, I was not home. I was in Sacramento, and so I don't know if, from what I gather, they still haven't picked up. And I know Master Circle, a lot of them, it was last Wednesday and Thursday, and I don't know if I'm going to take this up on organic.
We can pick it up on item number two on solid waste diversion report.
That's what I was thinking, okay. Instead of you, but I didn't know if you had a reaction from it or anybody saying anything.
No, ma'am. I'm aware of Master Circle. I've got an helpful, yeah, complaints there. Just one thing that we should probably be aware about, there were quite a few folks in the community that for whatever reason have moved out and have left. There were kind of carts where they don't want them or where it gives maybe sometimes will find carts that are abandoned that we really can't assign to specific property. So, the district itself staff has to take efforts to arrange for them to be removed. You know, most of them will be abandoned on roadway or in alleyway for orphaned carts, which we can't figure out what property we're responding to at that time. We'll reach out to CRNR, very good about having retrieved the cart if needed.
Even today on College Park, they're still picking some stuff up. We're due on Wednesday, it's last Wednesday, so it's, it's really kind of weird. And I felt bad that I wasn't there to respond sooner when I said I'm on it.
Certainly. Well, any, any staff concerns, you know, I'll be glad to look into it if you record it.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll probably have it under organic, which is very soon.
My pleasure. I'll, I'll inquire over the back, make sure that I ask the situation, because I do it. Shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anything else, Ed?
Good report.
Thank you, Ed. Number two, August 2019 solid waste diversion report.
May I ask you any questions as to that stand over before?
I have a question. Okay, this 62.30, that's without the LCC tolls. Subtlety LCC listed.
I guess without LCC tolls for August.
In there, so that'll probably, it's closer to 64%, which is pretty good.
Yeah, but keep in mind that those numbers won't go down next year because of ADC.
I know.
But that's still good for us.
Yes.
Probably one of the tops of...
Yes.
Any other questions? For the long organics funding report.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. This is a good opportunity to address Secretary Schaefer's concerns about the missing organic carts. I did ask the R to be here this afternoon to, to address the board on those carts. We were, actually, we see, I received some calls from a couple of board members about missed carts, so I thought it was appropriate that the partners could address the board on these issues, so I think we'll, we'll address them.
Good morning, partners from CRNR. So, Director Schaefer, sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Schaefer, I did take the notes on that. In the case of number one, you said it was near Master Circle?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the, the second instance was in, in the College Park neighborhood?
Yes.
And there's, there's last one.
Somebody had, since she didn't leave or she was out, she was so upset. So, I don't know, you know, I wish, if she left her phone number or something, I could have responded and happened to address.
I see. So, I'm not entirely sure why we missed these properties. The operations, I didn't know we had missed these properties. I'm going to have to contact our route manager and, and ask him what the situation was and how they can resolve it. And I'll have to get back to you, but on top of my head, I didn't know about these situations.
I don't know if we should be giving a phone number, that they can call right into you and complain rather than come to us?
Most, most of them do. I think it's just convenience. They know who you are, so they're calling. But their, their number is available on our website. We post CRNR's number on our newsletters, you know, our website, social media, who to call and, and this, that way it's faster. They go directly to source, it'll be faster, and they call on us.
Yeah, what's so bad is like on, it wasn't Big Duck Wednesday, it was a Big Duck Thursday, and it went all the way through, and it's still there. It's decomposing the whole time, and yet they have gardeners that come, and, you know, it's really a mess.
Oh, I mean, so we did have the holiday last week, which...
Yes.
Does create some inconvenience. You know, with that being said, there are holidays throughout the year, and operations are prepared...
Yeah.
You know, to adapt to that. I, you know what, because of the situation makes me believe that maybe they have some mechanical issues, and therefore they, even though they're prepared for the extra, extra day looking forward, but they still just couldn't knock it off.
So, you didn't get any calls?
No, I didn't get any calls, no. I didn't even notice the situation escalated to that point. But I'll speak with our route manager and get back to you and Scott.
Yeah, when you do have a mechanical issue, how is that handled? Do they send out an additional truck from another route, or how do they handle the mechanical issue?
It definitely depends on the, the nature of the mechanical issue. But let's say it's a situation where that truck is no longer usable by that, that day. They're going to bring in a helper truck. If possible, they'll bring one in from the yard. If not, they might have to do a situation where the trucks that are already in the city, because at any given moment, there are, you know, anywhere from like six to maybe more trucks in the city, they're going to ask those other trucks to kind of just converge and help out.
My, my question is, so when the mechanical issue, they come out with another truck, is the driver of the first truck that had a mechanical issue, get in the other truck? Because he knows what he's, where he's been? Or not? Just, just a thought.
It's a good question. It depends on the nature of the issue. If he has to take the truck back to the yard, I imagine he would drive the truck back to the yard if that's been towed in. He would work with that to get that truck towed in, and they would have a separate driver handle the route. In some situations, I think they could have the drivers merge into one truck, and that truck would now be a helper person. But since this is a residential route, I doubt that. In commercial routes, they do that sometimes.
Right.
Because they have to play cash from the commercial side, it's really tough. But on the residential side, I'm pretty sure they'd keep you in one traffic per truck.
So, the advice that you would give to Arlene? Have them call directly to CRNR, and then they'll take care of it right away? Usually, they do that the same day, you know?
Do you have a certain number there?
Yeah, so I can give you my part, and you can contact me directly, and then I can escalate situations like this.
You probably should, because, you know, I think what's really working is our newsletter. And so because of that newsletter, we're getting, at least I'm getting them calls, I know, on that, you know, from different people, just they feel comfortable. They don't realize that CRNR is the one that should be picking them.
Well, I'd suggest that Arlene change her message on her phone to a little bit of phone number.
You'd like to go to CRNR customer service?
There you go.
Well, you could give a partner's number, but...
We're on the payroll.
There you go.
I have a question for Scott, though. Another topic, do we have lockable trash cans still?
Yes.
Are those available?
Yes.
Also, you know, I've experienced in, sometimes drivers change the route. You know, they'll, they'll pick up, instead of picking up at 2:00 in the afternoon, they'll pick at 8:00 in the afternoon, and then residents might be used to the old time, and they put their trash out after the truck has gone by. So, change the route as little as possible.
And I think they would prefer to do that, too. I don't know the situation that you're referring to, why they modify the route. Routes do get modified. Maybe the addition of a new home or a new development. Or what's most likely the reason is fluctuation in weight. So, if, for whatever reason, the truck got full lots here, and they usually get full, now it's go to the dump sooner, and then therefore the manager might say, let's reroute you, you know, I'm bringing a helper from this side.
It's rare, but some, you know, the trash that came, at least once at 8:00 in the morning instead of in the afternoon.
I think the, the contract calls to them become as late as 8:00. What's the contract call?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. So, it varies based on what happens with the truck.
Yeah. I'll, I'll, you know, refer your comments to the route manager and recommend that, you know, change the route as little as possible. And I think that's his goal, too, because then it'd be an issue for the drivers.
Now, does, does your route manager, is that just for Costa Mesa or is it for the whole area?
He does cover more. He covers the, the sand district, but then he also does the open zone, and then he has some other areas, too, that are outside of Costa Mesa.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, President Fairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. I've been instructed the audio/video system is not working today, and I don't speak as loud as better speakers, so I'm a little closer here. And I have a different comment about the organics program. As you know, a successful organics program faces at least two problems. One is getting people to put their greens, their stuff in green cans, and the second is to get them to put the correct stuff in the green cans. So, on the, I don't know how many of you know where Cabrillo Street is. It runs parallel to 19th Street, one block to the north. On the, on the Wednesday after Labor Day, because there's no bike lanes on 19th Street, I was going down the alley behind me Casa, and all the girls were out from the people who live in the duplexes or apartments here on that block. And I was surprised to see the green cans overflowing with cardboard. First can I saw, the next can I saw also overflowing with cardboard, and a couple of units down, it looked like just ordinary trash filling that, like they use that as when they fill their regular can, they put it in there. So, in looking at this report for the organics, we see a number here, total collective, which I take is the total tonnage from all the green cans regardless of what is in them. And then the report gives you a breakdown here of recycle and landfill part. And I have two questions about that. First one is, these are not actual, the tonnage is probably not an actual number, like with the solid, other solid waste, but this has just been computed by multiplying the amount picked up by a fixed percentage. Somebody has decided that 4.6% is landfill, 96% is working, or is in the recycle column. I would wonder, first of all, where that number came from? I assume it's based on a sample somewhere. If that sample had been taken on Cabrillo Street, you'd get a totally different answer. Get like 5% organics, because they don't have a lot of yards there, and 95% other stuff would be the opposite of this. And then second question is, when it's reported recycled here, the stuff from Cabrillo Street, I assume is not being landfillled. I assume it's being salvaged out of the green carts. So, when it says recycled here, is this really the organic part, or is it the total part that it's recycled out of the green cans? You know, if you wanted to comment on this item, and I would think clarification in that would be helpful to you as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this is one, 2019 citizen survey questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll do a quick introduction, and then Naveen will review the report on the presentation. So, every several years, we do a citizen survey to, to engage our residents on how well performing, how, how well aware they are of our programs. It also helps us identify any improvements to be made. The last time we did a survey was in 2016. Prior to that, we did one in 2012. So, it's time to do another survey, which is tied into our performance measures program. So, I'm going to turn over to Naveen, and she's going to explain to you a little bit how the process works, how we hired our consultant, who's the consultant we picked. And then we have already met with the consultant on possible questions, which is what the purpose here for today's meeting is, is that in your attachment, there's actually a list of questions. We want to hear from the board and from the public. Are those appropriate questions? Are there questions you don't, you, you see missing that you want to add? There are some questions we tried to delete for time purposes, taking the survey, so we need all those kind of comments from you. So, at this point, I'm going to turn over to Naveen, and she's going to use some more, a little bit of history of how, how we, why we're here today, so.
President Perry, members of the board, June July. Staff solicited proposals from qualified public opinion research firms to conduct the 2019 citizen survey. Staff received three proposals and the word of the contract to Provalski Research LLC to conduct the citizen survey, research, and analysis. The survey will be limited to an estimated 20 minutes, and it will include responses from 500 district residents via phone call and online methods. Provalski Research also included one online focus group for the enterprise, which means that it would be about 12 residents over a course of a few days. Will be asked similar questions to those in the phone call, and that is an opportunity for us to gather more information. They'll play them videos or just give them more in-depth questions, and the respondents have time to provide more feedback, and that will help staff kind of tailor our outreach to, our outreach message. We've already met with Provalski Research to come up with some sample questions, and edits have been made. Attach our some sample questions, and the board can add, delete, or modify any as.
I have a question.
Arlene.
On you doing the 500, do you do a survey of around all area, or how do you choose?
Adam Provalski, is he a Provalski researcher? And he can better answer those ones.
We need to review for a reason.
Adam Provalski, Provalski Research. So, yes, the, the survey is statistically valid and stratified throughout the entire service area. So, it's appropriate percentage of, of age and gender and geography, so it would be representative of the service area.
Bob?
Bob, go ahead.
Naveen, did you make a statement that you're only doing 12 residences online? Why wouldn't you do more?
So, let me correct that. That's accurate for the focus group. So, the, the survey itself is 500, which is very robust for us, the size of Costa Mesa Sanitary District, when you consider the county of Los Angeles might survey 400. We're, we're doing big, we're going large with the survey. With the focus group, which we included, is an online focus group, and it's kind of, it's a different animal. It's, it's going to be done prior to the survey, and it gives, it's, you're all kind of familiar with the idea of a typical focus group, where 12 people sit around a table and kind of hop through things, and it's video game. In this case, the, the focus group would be done online, and it's done over several days, and it can have up to actually about 20 or your select people involved. And it's different, because we're asking them kind of questions where they're giving us, you know, more in-depth feedback. It's not just, you know, good or bad, it's tell us why. They can upload videos, they can set, tell us, okay, you know, we say, tell us in a few minutes or less, you know, what is it you like about the trash service, or what is it you're most concerned about? Or go out today and take a picture of something that you think is not right, like a, like a pickup that wasn't done, or, or some trash on the street, and those are very rare cases that might happen. And, and then we can also show them videos of programs that you have on YouTube and get some impression of it. A lot of more interaction over the course of several days. There, we typically tend to discover some things that even staff might not be aware of, or the board might not be aware of, things that might be bubbling up, or concerns that people we just don't know about. And also discover the words that they use. So, it's very simple in this building, you know, we talked about organics and digestors and, and carts and different things. They might use different words. We want to make sure that in that process, when we do that focus group, we then decide, okay, we may want to change the vernacular, how we approach things in the statistically valid survey, to make sure we're talking their language. That's the value of the online survey, or the online...
Do you already know who the focus group is?
Uh, no, no.
How do you establish that?
So, same way we recruit for the telephone survey, the telephone and online survey, we pretty much give, we, we wide reach, we do an email, a text, and we start calling people, you know, across the broad section of everyone. The same thing goes for the focus group. In that case, it's all online, and just to be clear, we tend to have more online respondents that are in the older category than younger, kind of, kind of intuitively, maybe. So, we sometimes have to balance it, you know, the other way. But, but it's going to be a random recruitment, and the goal is, it's a bit harder with 12 or, or two dozen, to have it representative, because it's a small group, but the goal is to have as representative as possible.
And you're moving towards using the internet or social media versus robocalls, surveys used to use. You know, that, that might seem like that could skew the results if, you know, one particular group, you know, brought... Can any, can anybody get on the internet and respond?
No. So, like I said, we are, in everything we do, our goal is to be statistically valid and stratified based on all the different factors of people who live in service area, essentially. So, in the case of the telephone and multimode survey and online survey, we are reaching out to people, and we are making sure we identify the people we want to, we want to respond. And if, let's say, you know, day two of the survey, we've got, you know, 82% of our respondents are all over 70, well, we're going to have to work hard to get to people, the other people, and, yeah.
I have a question. A frog in my throat.
You're changing your...
Is there a timeframe on this that we can coincide or put it together with the newsletter and say, we've done a survey now, and this is what we came up with?
Well, we'll do that eventually, yeah.
Okay.
But right now, the, the goal is have the survey come out in the year, share the results here within the year.
That year was one of the time.
When's the next newsletter, is for curiosity?
It's going to be mailed out in December. We'll be preparing it in late October.
We have, we'll, we'll present the results in the winter.
So, I was just thinking, if it was earlier, you could say, hey, you may be receiving a phone robocall to ask, you know, just, just the thought.
Yeah, that'll be, it'll be over by then.
Or even an update saying we are going through a survey right now, we will be coming with another newsletter, results.
Sure.
Give them something to...
Absolutely.
And just, by the way, we never use computers to call. It's all with a live human being. If someone gets a call, it's going to be, you know, someone's, and of course, online and on the phone, Spanish is always an option. If someone chooses Spanish, we...
Vietnamese, too.
And Vietnamese, absolutely. We're making sure, so in the end, you're going to have something that, we're going to know exactly what people think.
Okay. So, so we hopefully had a chance to look over the questions. Are there any questions that stuck out to you in the survey and attachment that you don't like, or you want something to add on it? Now's the time to let us know, and then we're going to share this with the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee, next week, get their comments as well, and then once we get the board and CAC's comments, then we're going to start surveying residents.
Yeah, I left my survey at home. You know, I have a few, few questions. I guess I can get them to staff.
Yes, yes, it's fine.
The thing that I did was interested in, question 34, it says sewer spills are hazardous source of pollutants that can infiltrate the environmental ecosystem and pose a danger. I think that thing, that sentence could be shortened, the sewer spills are hazardous threat to the environment and the health of, well, you know, I'll, I'll give you these comments. The question that I'd like to consider the board suggesting that we add is something on resource conservation. You know, conservation of water has a big impact on the sewer, sewer capacity, the sewage treatment plant capacity, and the energy used in, in the state or locally. And so, I would, I would suggest a question on, you know, conservation of resources.
You have an idea how you, how you want to ask that kind of question?
I'll work on it.
Okay, okay.
So, do you need him to get back to you before next Wednesday?
Yes, yes, by, by next Wednesday.
When does CAT meet?
Next Wednesday.
Okay.
Excuse me, at 6:00.
I'll get you my minor questions. Transcribed question.
Should we ask, do you use a new order?
Yes, please.
Any other comments, suggestions on the questions?
Everybody okay with? Okay, Mr. Mosher, other comment?
I have a comment.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, thank you. I did have a comment. I, I understand part of the survey, you're trying to determine whether people are even aware of existence of Costa Mesa Sanitary District as an entity, whether they know the name or not. However, I can tell you, you would get no response from me to the survey, as I see on the first page, certainly by telephone, maybe by email. When somebody calls on the phone and they say, this is Adam with Provalski Research and National Opinion Research. national opinion research organization, your opinion is important to us, I would hang up after the first sentence. I assume they're trying to sell me something. So I would suggest an opening that is actually, if you don't want to reveal the name of the district, at least explain the name, why the person's being called and what the purpose of the survey is. I would suggest something like, my name is Adam, I've been hired by one of your local government agencies to obtain feedback on how effective their programs are, have been to you. I might stay on the line, I might not hang up after that, but I would hang up if I just hear, this is a survey, your opinion is important to us. I would change the opening, both the email and this. I don't think Pavolski Research is important and probably turns people off when they hear a callback of that. Thank you.
I was thinking the same thing, Jim. Because I, my listening mic, I, you know, I do, but I think that's a valid point, you know.
Has that been your experience?
No, and the truth is, if we got one of you and we've got to then keep calling until we get the next white guy that makes quarter million dollars a year and to actually answer the call, it's a, it's a process. We're totally open to tweaking the language a little bit. One key thing is, we don't want to lead people, at some point in the survey, people kind of realize, okay, this is probably the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. What we don't want to do is lead them in the beginning and make them uncomfortable the idea of, wait, this is my government calling me, asking me questions and having them uncomfortable with the idea of giving answers. There's a social contract that we have in America, for a while at least, that says, survey research is confidential, the results are not going to be revealed to the agency. We'd rather not say we're calling from the agency, but in general, we don't have a problem getting people to just complete the survey and making sure it's representative.
Any other questions? Well, let's move on to. Solid waste ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was suggested by the board to create an ad hoc, as always, ad hoc committee to discuss topics that are identified in your staff reports, such as strategies to increase organic recycle participation, also maybe address the issue Mr. Moser brought up, you know, about contaminations, you know, how do we get the word out to reduce contamination and increase people to participate in the organics program? I know there's a big concern with the foreign tracking, solid waste and cycling data, also how calorie cycle disposal per capita is examined. So the idea was to create an ad hoc committee with two board members, two members of the CAC staff and CRN order server on that committee. I do want to mention that Director Schaefer wanted to, wanted me to point out that he's very much interested in serving on that committee, so take that consideration when you want to make your appointments. So once you make appointments next week, we'll try to get two CAC members and we'll establish that, we'll establish the first meeting. So if you want to create an ad hoc committee, please let us know who you want to appoint.
The ad hoc committee limited to two.
Yes, yes, absolutely. But we will, but we will still, we'll still follow the Brown ad, we'll still post the meetings, but generally, it's two board members.
So what, Schaefer, you said?
Director Schaefer expressed interest in serving on the ad hoc, Mike Schaefer.
Mike Schaefer.
Yes, Mike Schaefer, yes. Your secretary, your secretary Schaefer, you're right.
I didn't know what I was talking about.
So we need to formally.
Yes, we'd like to, who do you want to appoint? If you want to serve on, you know, serve, have the ad hoc committee appoint two board members.
Do I hear a motion? Bobby, you interested?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm pretty busy right now, kind of, for myself, because my page is a little bit. We need two to appoint each other. You have Mike and Bob, if that's the way you want to go.
So do we make a motion on the study session?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be helpful. Well, no, actually, actually, correct me wrong, if that's what you want, I'll bring it back to the board, maybe you can make a formal adoption. So I'll bring back the staff report, you're recommending Director Schaefer and Vice President Hooton, and then you'll formally adopt that, or adopt it, or go to me.
Because we can always give them our insights anyway.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You have a direction?
I do, thank you.
Seventy-fifth anniversary open house of the state of the district.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to turn this over to Gina Toranos. So you know, we have our, this is our seventy-fifth anniversary, and then every October, we have our State of the District event, so we thought it'd be nice to tie in an open house celebrating our seventieth anniversary along with State of the District event. So I'm going to turn it over to Gina and she's going to explain to you some of the activities we have planned for, for that day.
All right. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. We are planning to have our seventy-fifth anniversary open house and state of the district on Saturday, October twelfth, from nine to eleven a.m. here at the district. District staff recommended hosting the event on a Saturday morning this year in order to attract more attendees, since many residents have work or school during weekdays. The event is going to begin with a brief presentation in this boardroom to share upcoming district projects and also to honor President Ferriman for his thirty years of service with the Board of Directors. The attendees will then be invited to walk outside to the back portion of our parking lot, where we're going to have different booths set up for each department. As you can see on the screen, this is a sort of a rough layout of what we're planning to do. We're going to have demonstrations of the new VAC truck and also our CCTV trailer. And we're also going to have a trash truck themed bounce house for the kids. We're hoping to get some families and residents to come visit. And we're also going to be playing music over a speaker system. There's going to be booths for each of our departments, including solid waste, wastewater, permits, public outreach, and then finance administration. We are also inviting the U.S. Census to have a booth as well, to share some information. And in order to encourage attendees to visit each booth, each booth is going to be giving out a different seventy-fifth anniversary giveaway. So we're trying to get people to stop at each so they can collect something different at each booth. And so for parking, we're going to be utilizing the other half of the parking lot. We have overflow parking at the Spectrum parking lot, since they're no longer operating out of that building, and also the business complex across the street. We also have street parking down on Pullman Street, which is a little ways away, but we can use that as well. And as far as advertisement for this event, we've used a number of different channels, the city of Costa Mesa's website, we have flyers at Costa Mesa Newport Beach City Hall, we are in the Costa Mesa Minute videos, and they're going to help us promote on Next Door. We also did a round of bill inserts through Mesa Water District. And we're using our various social media, the Chamber of Commerce website, the Peach Jar flyer distribution for the school district, and also we're using MailChimp, Gov Outreach and Evites to other district and city officials from other agencies. So we've already gotten a positive response from these advertisements. We believe we'll have a pretty good turnout, so we're very excited and available to answer any questions.
I think the big thing would be parking. I know, did you ever get that approved, Next Door?
We have talked to some of the staff, but unfortunately, there is no administrative staff over there, so we can reach out to Spectrum headquarters potentially.
Where should we park and where should the staff park? Because we probably.
Next door. Pardon me?
Um, last time we parked.
Someone parked, someone parked in the neighborhood next to us, that parking lot. You should maybe remind us, you know.
We will, we can send something else.
Because we should leave as many spots open as possible.
Mm-hmm.
But because the last time, they actually parked here.
Yeah, this is, we won't have any parking in here. There won't be any parking in here because all the booths will be set up at the parking lot.
But we'll have this whole, but Next Door, yes.
So you're parking where? Across the street?
No, actually, it's this way, this building, adjacent to us, next door here, there's a parking lot over there, we park over there and just walk over.
Is there any way you can get a little more to the booth so that there is some parking, like the handicap parking?
We will have this whole half of the parking lot available.
Oh, I thought you said whole.
So it's, yeah.
Oh, so just that half?
Just the back half will be taken.
Okay, that was my question. Because people with handicap need to park close by.
And we can send you some information.
Do we need someone to direct parking?
We will have.
Because if we, are we going to have somebody directing parking?
Yes, we have two staff members that will be directing.
Okay, that's good.
Are the, are the extra parking lots well delineated or do the flyers contain, they can't contain probably a description of each one, but the flyers and things should direct them to a place where they can figure out where to go to park.
I'll need a flyer.
Oh, I don't need.
But Jim probably needs to park here.
Yeah.
Sure. Yes, this will be available.
And maybe have a sign out here that say handicap parking only.
Yeah, if you have your smart.
I have, I'll have one, a fish fry.
Well, they already got handicap. So we're just going to use that. Use it that way. That's a good idea. It's going to be good. So what kind of response have you received?
We have a Facebook event set up, so we've had several people show interest and RSVP to that. And we've gotten some feedback from our Evites, several of the Costa Mesa City Council members are coming. So that's all we know so far.
Okay, that sounds good. How long is the event, how long do you anticipate it lasting?
Only two hours, so it'll be from nine a.m. to eleven a.m.
Okay, once you leave, they're going to come in here first, right?
Yes.
And then is it all outside after that?
Yes.
So we don't come back in here then?
No. The room will be open in case anybody would like to come back in, but.
What, what did you say is going on in here?
We'll have a brief presentation about future projects that the district.
Once?
Yes, just once in the beginning, and then we're going to present a word to President Ferriman.
Are you going to need more chairs?
We have plenty of chairs.
We should all wear shirts.
We should probably remind this. So do we have a study session before that date? Before the twelfth, or is it day sessions after that?
Sure.
Just for curiosity, for me.
We have one before.
We have one before, so that.
That's the week of.
Okay.
We'll remind you then.
Okay, that's, that would be a reminder for us. Then we can, we get a copy of the part.
What day is this study session?
The eighth.
That would be good for us. Paul Blansky, there's only one guy that pays two hundred fifty thousand, and that's Bob, so the rest of us are a different category. I was going to tell him that.
Yeah, you can announce it.
Do we have anything on the sixteenth? We don't do it. Isn't it the nineteenth when it's our, our regular hearing?
Sixteenth of October?
September.
That's next, yeah, next Thursday's our board meeting.
Nothing on the sixteenth.
Okay.
The board meeting is on the nineteenth.
Okay, because at one time, we were trying to decide and I've got two, confusing myself. Okay, good.
So you guys, you got enough things to give back?
Yes, we ordered more.
Okay, any, anything else that we need to talk about? About just one quick thought again, that are we all finished at the movies or is that still going on for the theater?
Uh, we are on our last video, it ends October first. The campaign ends, so that would be a full thirty-two weeks.
I think it's been pretty good. I mean, I don't know if we had any other positive responses. I've seen it two or three times.
Yeah, it's good, yeah, did a good job.
Oral communications or record comments? Does anybody have anything?
Well, this is interesting. This Thursday, this Friday will be Friday the thirteenth, and it'll be a full moon. And the only full moon will have until the forty-ninth.
Go to what?
Yeah.
Forty-ninth of what?
Of, you know, like, right now, it's what, nineteen?
Twenty-nine here.
Twenty-ninth year.
Oh, on the thirteenth.
Yeah. Isn't that interesting? So, so this one, they're saying be real careful, it's a real Friday the thirteenth.
Nine eleven, or two.
Yeah, that's true, nine eleven is here too on Wednesday.
Yeah, big one.
And I just want to encourage you about, you know, to go to the conference in Anaheim that CSDA has.
That conference starts on Wednesday, is that a golf date or is that a workshop date?
They all, they have the dinner that night for.
Of the reception?
Yeah, the reception.
No, they're not.
It's on Wednesday, it's, the reception's on the Wednesday.
Yeah.
What, the Avengers?
It's a golf tournament on the twenty-fifth, and then there's also, it's, what do you call it? SDR May, SDR May has a breakfast.
Not on that date, not on that.
Another time.
That's on Friday.
This one has some workshops that you can go to in the afternoon if you're there. And then it also has a special district conference for people, they're going to have someone representing the new special district, and then they get to talk and say where they're from and if they have a problem, maybe another district can solve it, that kind of thing. It's on Wednesday.
The, I think Thursday's the ethics, isn't it?
Yes.
And we all need to take that right.
Yes.
Do you know what time the ethics training is?
I believe it starts in the afternoon.
There's two sessions, so one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
The ethics committee, you talked?
Ethics, yeah, take the class if you all want to.
The training, the certification. You just need to attend.
Just attend. You just attend, they have one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
Yeah, but I mean, are we already signed?
No, no, it's first afternoon, you have to attend both sessions to get the credit.
Right.
What's the date? That's on Thursday, the.
Thirteenth, twenty-seventh.
There's one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
Okay, anything else for the good of the cause? Meeting is adjourned.